All right, I'll call this meeting of the Planning Commission, September 25th, 2017. And then I'll ask for approval of the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting of August 28th, 2017.
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then I'll ask for approval to the agenda, or any changes to the agenda?
Yeah, I would like to move to approve the agenda with the change of moving item four, the public hearing, to consider the request for variance at the fire station number two, to the beginning of the public hearings, to move above the current item number two.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right. So, this is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission on items that are not on the agenda. Is anybody here who wants to talk about anything that isn't on the agenda? All right, seeing no one, we'll move on. So, our first public hearing then is number four. It's a public hearing to consider a request for a variance to allow a fence taller than six feet at Richfield Fire Station Two, at 6401 Penn Avenue. It's really hard.
Chair of Reese Daniels, members of the commission, thank you. AT&amp;T has proposed an expansion to the existing telecommunication equipment enclosure at Richfield Fire Station Number Two, also known as the Water Tower on Penn Avenue. Earlier this month, staff administratively approved a minor site plan amendment for the ground equipment and related site improvements at the property. AT&amp;T is now requesting a variance to allow the fence enclosure to be eight feet in height, which is equivalent to the existing equipment closure on the property. Variances cannot be approved administratively, so this requires Planning Commission approval. And finding that the proposal meets all requirements necessary to issue a variance, staff is recommending approval. That's all I have for you. If you'd like me to go into any further detail on any of the variance criteria, or just to, I guess, take a step back on anything, I will stand for questions.
Any questions, anyone? All right, this is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come up and speak, you can come up, sign in. No one? Any questions anybody wants to ask? All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Um, any conversation? Um, all right, then I will move that we move ahead with the staff recommendation to approve the taller fence. Is there a second? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for coming. I believe you're here. All right. Item number two then, is consideration of requests for a conditional use permit and variances for a restaurant with drive-through at 6529 Penn Avenue, and site plan approval at 6545 Penn Avenue and 2210 66th Street West.
Thank you. Penn Avenue Partners is proposing a Dunkin' Donuts restaurant with drive-through at 6529 Penn Avenue, which is currently Carhop, and related site improvements to the adjacent parcels at 6545 Penn Avenue, uh, which was formerly the home to Flowerama, and 2210 66th Street West, which is an unimproved alley adjacent to the, uh, actually right between the Flowerama property and the Ida Restaurant to the east. The comprehensive plan guides the property as mixed-use, and it is zoned mixed-use community within the Penn Avenue Corridor Overlay District. Fast food or convenience restaurants are a conditional use in the MUC zoning district. The applicant has not indicated a specific tenant for the property at 6545 Penn Avenue, but permitted uses would include general retail, service, and office uses. While this proposal advances many goals of the comprehensive plan, mixed-use zoning district, and Penn Avenue design guidelines, it does fall short of several code requirements. Uh, so along with the conditional use permit request, the applicant is requesting approval of the following variances. Proximity of the drive-through speaker to residential property. Uh, 150 feet is the required minimum. They're proposing 85.64 feet to the east property line. Uh, the buffer distance adjacent to residential property. 15 feet is normally required. Uh, 11.5 feet is proposed along the east property line. Uh, building coverage, a 25% minimum lot coverage is required in the mixed-use districts, and 9.64% is proposed here. Uh, on the rear building setback, so this is the building setback to the east, uh, it's a 15-foot maximum setback, 85 feet is proposed. Um, and then finally, off-premise outdoor advertising signs. Um, the zoning code, the zoning code completely prohibits the use of signs that advertise any business or service that does not take place on the same premises as the sign. Um, so typically that's thought of as a billboard-type sign, but it could also be thought of as, you know, one business wanting to have a sign elsewhere in the city, advertising, um, you know, an off-premise location. In this case, the applicant intends to retain the property as two separate parcels. Um, so the alley parcel would be contained, or the alley parcel would be combined with the, uh, the 6545 or Flowerama parcel, and then the second parcel would be the 6529 or Dunkin' parcel. So the applicant intends to retain the property as two separate parcels, and proposes to install signs on each that includes advertising space for the business located on the other parcel. And I believe one of the pages in the, one of the last pages of plans in the report, um, shows the sort of signage proposal. And we'll come back to that in a little bit. Uh, staff is, staff is generally supportive of the conditional use permit request, but there are concerns with two of the variance requests. Uh, the remainder of the, of the variances requested are technical in nature and can be justified within the context of the overall site improvements, renovation of the property at 6545 Penn Avenue, and the vastly improved traffic circulation into and within the property. Uh, so staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit, and the variances to, uh, to reduce the minimum lot coverage, the setback to the rear property line, and to reduce that buffer yard adjacent to the residential property. Um, and then we do have some reservations with, uh, with the variance to reduce the drive-through speaker distance requirement from 150 feet down to 85, to about 85 feet. Um, since that is just, it's about 57% of the required distance. Um, this is closer than any recently-approved drive-through facilities in Richfield. Um, but it, looking around the community, it would not be the closest, it would not stand out, I guess, as the closest drive-through speaker in the area. Um, at the nearby Dairy Queen, uh, just about a half-mile west at 2866th Street, the drive-through speaker is set back about 40 feet from the nearest property line, so closer than what's proposed here. But the, it's actually a pretty similar distance to what is proposed here from the speaker to the nearest residential building. So there certainly is precedent, while, while it is significantly less than what is required by ordinance, there is precedent in the area. Um, should this variance request be approved? Uh, drive-through equipment specifications, including information about noise levels and volume controls, must be approved by the Community Development Director prior to installation. Equipment must include automatic volume control, and the city's noise ordinances will apply at all times. Uh, staff also has some concerns with the overall quantity and size of freestanding signage proposed for the site, which conflicts with the Penn Avenue Corridor design guidelines. So staff is looking for some feedback from the Planning Commission, um, just as a result of the discussion tonight, to establish possible findings, um, for City Council action on those requests. That's all I have for the staff report. I can go into any further detail on the, on the conditional use permit or variance criteria if you'd like. Uh, the applicant is here. You have any questions for them as well? Thank you.
Um, I do have a question about where the sign placement is proposed. Perfect. I mean, I saw that with the sign, but where on like page, like the map? I don't know if this has a number.
There's a single page of the plans that shows all, all of this, all of the freestanding or ground signage proposed on the site.
Mm-hmm.
It looks like that's page 28. So the, um, what's shown on the left is the existing pylon sign on the Flowerama parcel. That is there today at the corner. Um, so that would be, that's a non-conforming or grandfathered sign essentially, um, that, that can be reused, and that what, again, what they're asking for a variance is the ability to put, since it's going to be separate parcels, the ability to put Dunkin' signage on that existing sign at the corner, in addition to whatever tenant goes in the, at the corner. And then the vice versa, uh, the sign shown in the center there would be at the very north end of the property, so on Penn Avenue, basically north of the Dunkin', uh, of that driveway and the Dunkin' building. And then they're, they're asking for that variance to apply to both parcels, so that that sign would also, um, carry signage for the tenant at the, at the corner.
So just some understanding, so there's, there would be one tall sign at the corner of 66 and Penn.
Correct. And that, and that one's existing.
And that one's the existing one, yep. And then there would be an additional one, say, on the north side of that building, of Dunkin', of where the proposed building would be.
Yes, at the far north end of the parcel.
Okay, the far north end, right? Before or after the driveway?
After, north of the driveway, yes. Yep.
Okay. That's helpful, thank you.
And then there would be, uh, shown on the right side of that page, page 28, there's a, there's a directional monument sign that would be at 66th Street, just to, um, so and that, and that, staff has no concerns with that monument, with that ground monument sign on 66. It was just the, um, I think the overall size of both signs, given the, um, given the proximity, the fact that this is going to feel like one site, um, questioning just that, that overall amount of signage on the site.
Okay. Um, and then one more question that I had, on, I think it's that same page, there are, yes, so on that same page, number five, propose on-premise site signage. There's a little note where there's kind of three windows. Um, and it says decorative window, spanel glass, or applied graphics where allowed. Do we allow graphics to go there? Or would that have to be glass?
So you're referring to a page in the, the Penn Avenue Design Guidelines?
No, sorry, on the, um, the signage, the elevation.
Oh.
Yeah, is it still page 26? Let's see. A 3.1 is the...
Sure.
One I'm talking about, and then it's the number five. I don't think it has a page number.
What was the question about that particular signage?
So, it says where allowed? Graphics can go there? Decorative windows, spanel glass, or applied graphics where allowed, 120 square feet. Would we allow graphics there?
Yes, um, there was an earlier version of the, there was an early version of elevation that showed a large Dunkin' graphic on, on the Penn side of the building. Um, a gra, a graphic or element like that would be allowed as long as it, um, the wall, wall signs basically are allowed to be up to 15% of the wall area, so you'd take basically the, you know, length times height of that Dunkin' building, whatever 15% of that facade is, so, um, I think something, at one point, there was a very large graphic shown on that side of the building, but certainly, in addition to the Dunkin' signage that is shown on that Penn Avenue side of the building, there could be other signage up to that 15% allowed.
All right. Those were my two main questions. Anybody else have any questions for staff before we, yeah, go ahead.
I guess I've got a couple of questions about the variances. Um, I'm curious, first off, um, the, the variance about the lot coverage, I guess I'm curious sort of what, what is that intended to protect? And, I mean, you call it sort of a technical, technical in nature, it can be justified within the context of the overall site improvements, but going to less than half of our requirement seems significant. My understanding from the, you know, I was reading the Penn Avenue Plan, was that the intent was to create a certain level of intensity or quality of development, and it, it seems like a non-trivial difference to go from 25 to 9%.
That, that's correct, and that, yeah, you're right that characterizing that as a technicality is probably, um, not accurate. The, and you're right about the intention of building coverage minimums to, um, you know, cities regulate sort of a minimum level of development in a variety of ways, one of them being, uh, like this with a, with a building coverage minimum, so if your lot was, you know, we'll say, um, for, just to use round numbers, I guess, if your lot was 1,000 square feet, you know, you'd have to have a minimum building size of 250 square feet, covering 25% of the parcel. Um, and I guess that's intended to prevent sort of low-intensity uses where you have a very small building, um, you know, on a large, on a large site. Another way that cities regulate that is with something called FAR or Floor Area Ratio, um, which basically that, it has the same kind of effect of, um, calling for either taller or larger buildings to cover more of the land.
And then I guess, um, you know, in general, of course, there's a lot of, a lot of things you're juggling in the air here, but I do think the statement about comparing it to the Dairy Queen is not quite accurate, that it's a similar distance from the nearest residential building. Just measuring on like Kennebunk County's property max, the Dairy Queen, the Southdale Park Building is, whatever works out, like 95 feet back from the property line. Anyway, the total works out to 135 feet from the drive-through speaker from the wall of the Dairy Queen to the Southdale Park Building. It's only seven to 10 feet back from the things that are here, so this would be 92 feet, so it's 46% greater distance at Southdale Park than it is in this case.
Okay, that, I, I may have, I may have mismeasured the, the Dairy Queen one to Southdale Park.
Um, the other thing I guess I'm just curious about is particularly the ordinance, or the variance about, um, the back, the back buffer area, which, you know, is maybe not the most impactful variance that we're considering, but one of the standards is that, uh, the circumstances were not created by any persons presently having an interest in the property, and it seems like it's already wider than that. Um, the choice to make a narrower is to accommodate the drive-through, which is itself not allowed except by variance, so wouldn't that be something that's created by the, by the applicant? A circumstance that's created by the applicant to need to remove that space?
I, I suppose in a way you could view it that way, um, in that, yes, it is current, the buffer area today meets requirements with the way the Carhop site is laid out. Um, but with, basically with the proposal that's in front of us, with the lot, with the lot, the existing lot size and lot dimensions being what they are, um, in order to make this proposal work, the only way that, uh, the only way that the prob, that the needed circulate, circulation for the, for the drive-through and parking drive aisles can happen is by reducing that.
Mm-hmm. All right, I think, I have more concerns about the drive-through item, but I think we can get to that after, but thank you for answering those questions.
Anybody else have any questions for staff? Yes.
I just have a question for Matt. A you, a minute ago you said that the noise enforcement would be in effect for this, this property. Um, so does this mean that there'd be no intercom use or any of that thing before seven in the morning?
No, the, so the city's noise ordinance doesn't, you know, it, it does establish hours, uh, hours for noise, you know, beginning at 7:00 AM, I believe. Um, but it doesn't state, but it doesn't mandate silence in the, you know, in the overnight hours. It doesn't mandate complete silence. There's a certain, uh, there are certain thresholds.
But I mean, we've got people that are living so close to that, and you know, your, your comparison to the Dairy Queen and this, with this speaker, Dairy Queen doesn't open early, not like, you know, like this, what, this Mr. Donut thing, what time are they gonna be opening? At seven, six, five?
I'll let the applicant answer what, what their proposed hours are.
Because, uh, Dunkin' Donuts, not Mr. Donuts, but, yeah, so it's really hard to have a comparison to the Dairy Queen and speakers compared to this, this property, because that's really, they, I'm sure have much earlier hours than the DQ. And, uh, so if we, but if we could enforce the noise ordinance till after seven, it might be a little more acceptable.
Any other questions?
Nope.
I have one more question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So, you had mentioned that the, the properties are gonna be treated as two separate parcels still. They're not gonna be joined in any way, shape, or form, but it seems like we're still treating the, the parking area as it is now gonna be one contiguous parking area, essentially. Is that correct?
That, that is correct, and that, and that's not terribly uncommon either when you have, um, a couple of adjacent commercial properties. Um, they are, they are required to have a cross-access agreement between each property, um, you know, to ensure that, basically that that access remains in place. It's, and it's something that would be recorded on the property title of each property.
But currently it is the same owner for both properties, correct?
That's correct. It's currently under the same ownership group, and, um, like I said, it's not an uncommon situation even when there are two separate property owners. Um, you know, especially here on the, um, in the Penn Avenue area, you've got a lot of small commercial parcels where, where even one property owner may not even have an access on their parcel. They have to, you know, get, they enter their parking lot off someone else's property.
I, I guess I just asked the question, cause it just, I, 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 I see us trying to shoehorn this into this smaller space when we have the same ownership across both the parcels. I know we're this far along in this process, but I'm just wondering, you know, was the, was the question ever brought up where we could join it, reconfigure the lot to maximize the use of this space and, and try to get, um, you know, I guess, not have to come up against this where we have so many variances and character issues? Um, cause it seems like there's a lot of ways we could lay out that site, especially if you consider both parcels in unison. But, um, I, I don't, I don't really know where to go with this, but that's kind of my general feedback on that, so.
Um, so the, the only variant, by, by having those be a single property, the only variance I believe that wouldn't be necessary would be the signage variance, because they would all be on the same parcel then, and then they would only be, um, just having to comply with, with our typical sign ordinances and the Penn Avenue Design Guidelines. Um, one, one thing in particular, I guess, as, as this, um, the applicant brought forward several, um, variations of the site plan to staff and, and to a couple of work sessions with, um, with policymakers, perhaps before you were on the planning.
I think I missed those first ones, I guess that's why I'm getting backstory now, so.
This was, you know, this was the one that worked the best. Out of all of those, in terms of building orientation, and one of the biggest things, um, in terms of meeting code and being viewed as an improvement to the area, is getting that building oriented right along Penn Avenue and having the bulk of the building, so you get the most kind of building wall, um, you know, active street front along Penn Avenue. Um, and that also kind of helped out with the drive-through circulation as well. Our, our code prohibits, um, drive-through aisles or basically drive-through accesses from accessing the street directly. It all has to be internal to the parking lot, sharing access with kind of the, the general circulation. Um, the other, the other thing at play here was that the applicant was not interested in, in touching the building at the corner, the former Flowerama parcel. Um, they are making improvements to that property, sort of in concert with the sidewalk improvements on the, uh, on the Dunkin' parcel. So improvements to the sidewalk, the landscaping, the parking, but not wanting to touch, um, to the, touch that building or to kind of radically reconfigure it.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, maybe I'll just add a couple of thoughts. Um, if you look at the site plan, which is page 21, one of the things we tried to do, um, you know, there are required landscaping islands or peninsulas in the parking lot. We tried to, um, encourage the applicant to orient those, um, next to the, um, noise, um, sources, so either next to the order board or next to the drive-through window, so that perhaps, uh, some of the landscaping, the vegetation could be a, an audible screen of some sort. And the other thing I just want to point out, and Matt had touched on this, the building to the south, um, the Flowerama building, um, I believe one of the reasons that the applicant didn't wanna make drastic changes there, uh, the building was a former gas station, and there are, um, there were some concerns about disturbing the soil, disturbing the ground. Uh, once you do that, um, it, it triggers a lot of environmental, um, requirements. Um, and the applicant felt that doing so would make this project economically unfeasible. Um, and, you know, a lot of this does, you know, revolve around what, what we're told by the applicant is or is not economically feasible. Uh, you know, that's some of the things that staff would have preferred, um, you know, combining parcels, maybe tearing down, um, the Flowerama building, reorienting things. Um, you know, the, the answer to many of those questions was that it impacted the economic viability of the, uh, project to such a degree that it probably wouldn't be proposed, um, and that's something, you know, we, we just have to take their word at.
I have a question about 150 feet. Where do we come up with that number? Do we stand at 149 and say that's too loud?
You know, I, I don't know what the, what the genesis behind the, the 150 feet, where that came from. Um, you know, there's a, the zoning code contains a variety of setback distances and buffer distances for different things, um, being 10, 15.
It's just our starting place.
Yeah, it, um, I assume it was arrived at as part of some kind of study, or perhaps, um, studying other cities, uh, ordinances is often how a lot of things are arrived at as well.
Okay, thank you.
I, I would tell you that in my time here, you know, 17 or 18 years, I can't, I've never received a complaint about drive-through speaker or window noise. I'm not sure that those complaints would necessarily come to me. Um, they, they, it's probably about a 50% chance that they would, uh, and I have not heard those in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a question.
Yes, please.
Um, so this is again with regards to the 150-foot requirement. Uh, I just would, I'm interested to hear why staff is comfortable with that large of a variance, um, for that location, and then also, if you could talk a little bit about, um, the fact that this is on such a busy intersection, and if I think of a comparable drive-through on an intersection, I would say maybe the Caribou-Einstein, um, drive-through, and, uh, I guess the parking lot is much larger there to accommodate, you know, sometimes there's a backup of cars that are going through that drive-through, especially early in the morning. Um, so maybe just talk a little bit about what the thought was at that busy of an intersection to be okay with like that big of a variance?
Sure, I'll, I'll start with the, the traffic flow question. So this has been reviewed by Public Works and Engineering, uh, and they did not have concerns with traffic spillover out of the site onto the public streets. Um, one benefit of the site, or one of the main, one of the large benefits of the site being set up the way it is, is that it, it actually closes a number of the current driveways into the site. Uh, currently, the, um, the Dunkin', or the current Carhop, or Dunkin' is proposed, has two of its own access points, and then the Flowerama parcel has another access point onto Penn, and, um, one into the, one from 66th, as well as that unbuilt or unimproved alley. So there's, they're, they're currently reducing by at least one, uh, driveway on 66th Street and removing two driveways on Penn Avenue, um, which in general really simplifies the traffic flow in and out of the site. And, um, as the, as the streets are, as those streets are configured, there's actually a full median on both, so one can, one cannot take a left into this property. There is, um, you can turn right into the property from westbound 66th Street, and you can turn right into the property, um, from northbound Penn Avenue. There's, there's no way to take a left in or out of this site, which really helps with, um, I guess, traffic problems on, I guess, on the public side, on, on the street. Um, with regards to internal circulation, um, there's a requirement that they show enough stacking for four vehicles from the speaker, and with the speaker kind of being oriented in the center of the site, that's definitely, uh, accomplished here where whichever way the vehicles do wrap around, um, that it would accommodate significantly more than four vehicles in either direction, either out to 66th Street or up to Penn Avenue. So that it would, it would take quite a lot to back it up onto public streets. And then, um, to your question about the variance, in terms of, so staff did not provide a direct recommendation on that, and that's, we're just kind of, um, looking to kind of defer that to the appointed elected policymakers in the community, because that is a large variance ask. You know, normally we provide a pretty clear recommendation, approve or do not approve, but in this case, um, felt that, you know, while we're clearly providing a recommendation here on the conditional use permit, the layout of the site, um, several of the other variances, on, on that one, I think essentially if it's not, on the drive-through speaker distance, if it's not approved, it essentially removes the ability of this property to have a drive-through.
I have one last question, it might be something that developer can answer rather than you, but, um, I'm curious about the need for a speaker period and being able to pull up through the drive-through window. I have seen some of these work, but they're not necessarily in such a situation as maybe Richfield, but maybe a, you know, smaller population density. But, um, I, you know, I don't know if you guys can answer this when it comes to that point, but...
I'll defer to the applicant on that. Um, and then Chair of Reese Daniels, I did have one note I forgot to mention at the end of my, uh, report, that I did open on your computers, open in Adobe, there should be a second PDF document there, project narrative. that I did open on your computers, open in Adobe, there should be a second PDF document there, project narrative from, from the applicant. I just, I received that earlier today and I wanted to, so we'll provide you with about maybe three, three to five minutes here for the commission, just to read through that document.
Thanks, we'll read that now.
And then when, when you're ready, I suppose we can, we can continue with questions or open the floor to the applicant. Thank you.
This is when people fast forward on YouTube. Good, all right. Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Just a couple more, I'm curious about the drive-through. If they didn't have the drive-through, would that affect their parking requirement at all? Like, do you get to have fewer parking spaces when they assume that some traffic is coming through a drive-through?
Um, we don't, it all, it's considered, so the Duncan would be considered to be a class-three restaurant, similar to any other, which is called convenience or fast food restaurants. The requirement is not augmented in any way by, by having a drive-through or not. The parking requirement would stay the same.
And the applicant is certainly not required to have a drive-through in this case, right? That's their business choice?
There is no city ordinance that would require a drive-through.
Okay, thank you. And just to be clear, you know, although it, it's nice that it's known to us who the tenant or the owner of the building will be, that's somewhat unusual. They, they could sell in a year or, or lease the space to a different fast food restaurant and use this existing space with these existing variances, is that right?
Yeah, you're speaking about the, the, on the proposed Duncan parcel or either parcel?
If Duncan were to pull out of the market in a year and, and it was sold to a Chick-fil-A or whatever, if they wanted a site that small.
There's nothing here that would, no, in terms of, there's nothing in, there's nothing in city ordinances and there's nothing included in the, in the resolution conditions in front of you that would prevent any other type of convenience food user from, from using the building.
Okay, thank you.
All right, are we ready to open the public hearing? Any other questions? Good? Okay. This is a public hearing. So if anybody would like to come up and speak at the public hearing, you can sign in, give us your name, you'll get five minutes to speak. Yeah, come on up. Yes, and then just say your name and address so we can have it for the record. Can I have you speak into the microphone just so it's recorded? Yeah, thank you.
My name's Andrew Akins. I'm representing Premier Properties. We own the, own and manage 6520, 26 and 32 Oliver, which is the apartment buildings right behind the car hop, which used to be the old Arby's. And I don't know much about what they're planning. Obviously, I know we need to improve that site and that's a goal for the city and for everyone here probably. But I'm concerned about, I was looking at it before I drove over here, it looks like there's about, well, I have five one-bedroom apartments that are right on that west side of 6532, and then I'm not sure how far it's going, looking at that map. I'm, I'm assuming Canine College is staying, that building's staying. Okay, so then it's about half of my 6526 would be affected by this lot, by this, you know, the new restaurant. And I'm afraid that it's too close and that my residents aren't going to want to listen to somebody order their coffee or sub sandwich or Taco Bell or whatever it could be years from now, so. And I also don't like that it's going to be closer, they're going to move it closer to my building than what's required also. I don't think that should be either. If you look at it now, the fence and things like that, and the trees are all in disrepair, it looks, you know, it doesn't look very nice. I've put a lot of money into the buildings, I put new windows in them, I bet new roofs, I put new driveways, cleaned up the hallways, or, you know, trying to get good people to want to stay there, and no one's going to want to listen to someone ordering their food. I'm, I don't know enough about it, but I, I think it's way too close. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming. Anybody else?
Hi, excuse me, Carla Carlson with Penn Avenue Partners. Good evening. Got Chris Liu and Damon Dancheck here as well, they're representing Duncan. Just wanted to say hello. We've been in front of the city of Richfield on numerous occasions, whether it's in front of Matt and the staff or at-work sessions or renewing our CUP for the current tenant, Carhop. So just wanted to introduce ourselves once again. Wanted to talk just very briefly about signage. Uh, one of the reasons that we need or have requested the amount of signage that we have on our site plan is due to the loss of the access into the corner lot. So we're down to two access points, so we feel that it's going to be very important to let our customers know kind of where they can get in and access that corner lot specifically. So we think that it's reasonable to request signage for both tenants, you know, the future tenant and hopefully Duncan on all the signage. So I just wanted to explain that. And I think maybe Chris and Damon can talk about the volume of the drive-through.
Yeah, we, we obviously understand the concerns of the drive-through. It's a big deal. We've talked with Duncan about it, they've done it in similar situations where 3M's, they make speaker box and everything. They can actually set it so that the volume is low when we open, and then it ramps up throughout the day. If ambient volume goes up, they have sound controls. Anything that we need to do, and they can actually come out and measure and say, too many dust bowls, we can hear it from the apartment building, they'd bring it lower. So we can work with whatever needs to be done, and yeah, we're very excited at the opportunity to come into Richfield and think that Duncan knows to be a great opportunity for the city. Appreciate your time.
What time, what are your hours? What are you expecting to serve?
So we know the Caribou Coffee opens at 6:00 AM, and we'd probably say something similar to that. We're flexible and work with other city needs. Obviously, we're a morning breakfast coffee shop, so earlier the better for us.
So you absolutely have to have a drive-up?
We do, that is a requirement for us right now. 70% of our business is through drive-through, so it just doesn't work for us economically without it.
Why?
Why?
Yeah.
Oh, we, we couldn't pay the rent.
I mean, people have walked up to get donuts for years. I mean, I, why do they have to have a drive-up? And especially when you're in such a restricted space as this.
You know, it's, yeah.
Yeah, well, about 60 to 65% of our business is drive-through. And most customers these days are expecting that convenience. They're in a hurry. Our requirement, our standard for speed of service is 120 seconds, so two minutes to get through the drive-through. So with that amount of business required for drive-through, it's not sustainable to not do drive-through. And I think the question came up, could we do it? Duncan Corporate would not approve this site. We're new franchisees, this would be one of our new locations, and down the road, meaning maybe three or four, five years, they might approve us to have some non-drive-through locations, but early on, we need to establish and meet the expectations of, of customers.
Well, the, the truth of it is, if you go to the Starbucks over in France or the Caribou down at 66th and Lyndale, you can get, you can walk in and get things a lot faster because the queues sometimes will be, especially the one in France, will be maybe 20 cars. And I have gone over there and within five minutes I have whatever I want by walking in. I think these queues are just, they're just adding to the pollution and everything else, and so. But you, but is absolutely required to have a drive-up?
For this location, for, for our first five, six, seven locations.
So there are some locations that they don't require?
Not in Twin Cities, not, not in the New Market. So there's four franchisees in all of the Twin Cities. We've got the western part of Minneapolis. So all, all four of us are required to have drive-through, so nothing would be approved. And I think somebody asked about, could you do it without a speaker and just order at the window? And that would actually increase the amount of time and increase the stacking because you get no time to prepare the product. With a four-car stack, you get that time to not only prepare the drinks, which are sometimes fast, but there's also food that's, that's ordered and needs to be made per order, and sometimes dozens of donuts that need to be boxed. So if you did it just at the window, it would actually increase the time and increase the stack and inconvenience to customers.
Are you going to have like these coffee drinks like they have at Caribou and Starbucks, or you just have?
We do have, we do have espresso-based drinks like that.
So that really adds to the time too?
Which can be done with a four-car stack, but without a stack, it, it makes it harder, yes.
Does anybody have any other questions for the applicants?
I do just want to address the, you know, our neighbors. We appreciate you coming tonight. I don't know if any of the residents of the apartment are here tonight, but I'm hoping that they would really enjoy having a Duncan so close to them. Um, we do have right now existing some pretty large trees, and we are planning on putting in all new big overstory trees to block that and screen the, the borderline between those residential properties and our property. And there's also an existing fence that's quite large that we think does a pretty good job of screening. So we are taking your thoughts into consideration. We're doing everything we can to, to try to, you know, appease your, your residents and, and your concerns.
Thank you. All right, is there anybody else for the public hearing who'd like to come up and speak? No one? Anyone? All right, is there, anybody have any questions? We do a 30-minute Q and A. All right, uh, motion to close the public hearing?
Oh, move to close the public hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed? All right, the public hearing is closed. Um, do you guys want to have discussion first and then talk about motions? Um, I'll start. I think I said this before. So I actually lived in the apartment buildings next to the Dairy Queen when I first moved to Richfield. That's where I first landed. Um, and I know the, the distance is a little bit different, and this was 10 years ago. So I, the, before the Dairy Queen was remodeled, so it was the old Dairy Queen. And we slept with our windows open all the time on our third-floor apartment, and you could hear the speaker, but it wasn't a nuisance. It wasn't annoying, you know, the street traffic was louder. It was actually, one of the nice things about living in the apartment was that you were close to something, right? You could walk there, you could go there. It was an enhancement for me. So I just wanted to start by saying that, like, I think, uh, I have concerns about the, the noise as well. But I don't think we've ever had anything proven saying, this is too loud so close. I know we always want to be cautious before it's built, right, but I, having that firsthand experience, I'm not actually troubled at all by the drive-through noise. That's my opinion. I also know that every single person that I've talked to in my neighborhood is really excited about this. Um, I've not heard one negative thing whatsoever from any resident, other than the gentleman who came here tonight, so thank you for coming. I do have issues with the signage though. The, the double-tall signage feels very duplicative to me. And in an area that's kind of signage-heavy anyways, I, I don't like that, but that's where my thoughts are right now.
Sure. I also have problems with the signage. I think most of the people who are going to be partaking in the Duncan Donuts, you know, they're, they're going to be pretty familiar with the intersection and the area. I'm, I'm not super concerned that we're not going to be able to figure it out. And so I, I just, I, I don't, I don't necessarily believe that we need duplicative signage. For the noise, for the speaker, you know, DQ's not open at 6:00 AM, so I guess, that's one thing also. But also, you know, that, that is about twice the distance of what this has to those buildings. And I think to say that, you know, I, I always see, you know, oh, we'll plant trees and plant trees, but realistically, those trees, they don't come to maturity until 10 years, and growing in this really sad little eight-foot strip with no root zone, there's, they hardly have a chance to ever get to maturity in the first place. So I think they're not going to really provide any real value unless you spade in full-size trees and you actually make the landscape back there, you know, you have a big enough soil medium to work with to make the trees happy and healthy and to provide a, a long-term barrier. So I, I think I, you know, if, if I were to approve this, I would say, one, you would have to figure out a way to get the, the trees in there with an acceptable media and acceptable size right off the bat to make them worthwhile. Um, and I think, two, if there is still to be a speaker there, which I totally understand the expediency of having to do that, I, you know, can we orient it like the Dairy Queen, where it's actually facing the incoming traffic, the speaker, instead of pointing straight at the car window, where you kind of have to talk across your mirror a little bit? I know it's a little awkward, but it works. Everybody has figured that out too. So I guess these are kind of my concerns that I might like to see happen if I were to approve this conditionally.
I think the turning of the speaker is actually a good idea. Uh, the Dairy Queen speaker's not turned though, the billboard is, but the speaker's not.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I saw your layout was the same where the, the billboard is turned in, but the speaker's not. So I don't know if you can cheat that at all, if that would help, if we have any idea if that would help.
Well, let, maybe, I don't know if Matt has some thoughts on this speaker orientation?
I, oh, I, I was going to make one clarification on the, so the landscaping on the east side, there is actually, staff had the same concern that, that the trees proposed were not of comparable, obviously not of comparable size to what's there today. They're fairly large pine trees that kind of line that east property line today. So one, one of the conditions in the resolution was that we were requesting revised landscaping plan, providing both additional ground cover, in, in addition to the trees shown in that buffer area there. So additional low-level landscaping and requiring some larger tree species than what are proposed in there with, with the capability to mature, to something much, much taller than what was shown.
I just, I'm sure, I just wanted to talk a little bit about the automatic volume control speaker technologies. As I understand it, you know, in today's day, doing a little bit of internet research makes any of us an expert on any topic. Uh, so I will not claim to be an expert on this. Uh, I did some reading into it, I did some checking around. My understanding is much of this technology is based on ambient noise. So at 6:00 in the morning, when there's not a lot of traffic on Penn, the ambient noise is very low, and the volume that the speaker would need to be for the occupant of the car to converse with them wouldn't need to be as high. So the automatic volume control, I think, I believe has a mechanism for measuring the ambient noise and varying the speaker volume based on that. So then at 8:00 in the morning, when Penn Avenue is full of cars going up and down the street, and the speaker needs to be louder for the car and the speaker to communicate, that happens. Um, with that though, when you're an apartment resident, you know, the ambient noise is kind of white noise, and so all the noise levels go up and down. Uh, that's my understanding of how the automatic volume control works. My understanding also is that they, there is some ability to override or to, to program that so that at certain hours it would, you know, you've, you've set it. uh, so that at certain hours, it would, um, you know, you've, you've set its limits, uh, of a volume at six AM, and then it's different at six-thirty, and it's different at seven. So that's about all I can tell you about, um, that, and I don't know if the applicant has more information on the, the technology.
Yeah.
Um, so this is where, where I'm at. I don't, I don't feel strongly about the conditional use permit itself. I guess I'm okay with the staff recommendation on that. The drive-through variance, I, I don't see any way we could approve it. I don't, I didn't find it surprising that all the staff could not come up with a clear reason why, because I don't, I don't think there is one. Um, I, I appreciate that they, they can't do it without it. This is a requirement of their site, but I think it just may mean that this site is wrong for it. And I mean, I do hear some of your concerns. It's good, because I think you're probably the only person who's been close to a speaker. Um, but this opens at maybe six AM, five AM is what all the other ones currently in the Twin Cities open at, rather than ten AM. I think another, you know, another key issue is that if we think that a hundred and fifty feet is the wrong distance, giving a variance for this one thing isn't really the appropriate way to address that. I think we should change the ordinance of a hundred and fifty feet is the wrong distance. In this case, you know, we have specific criteria of what is needed to approve a variance from what we've got today, and I think it doesn't, it doesn't meet these criteria. Um, particularly, I'm struck by criteria number, criteria number two is unusual or unique circumstances applied to this property, which do not apply generally to other properties in the same zone or vicinity. Every single commercial property on the east side of Penn Avenue, from sixty-eighth to crosstown, is this exact same width, and this exact same circumstance would apply. So I, I'm not comfortable with it. I think it would significantly degrade the quality of life to those apartment buildings, and I, I don't wanna get even closer than we were in nineteen sixty-three with that Dairy Queen with a brand-new project right now. I, I am appreciative of the changes that the applicant made from the initial site plan. It does look better, but I'm not comfortable with that. It's a little bit less consequential, but I'm also uncomfortable with going from the twenty-five percent to the ten percent, um, lot coverage. It's, it's pretty much the same size as the existing building, just rotated to address Penn a little bit better, and it's not really the improvement that we were seeking with the Penn Avenue guidelines. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Rosenberg, do you, do you guys have anything you wanted to?
Uh, I feel like most things have been covered. I, um, I, I think if we do have, uh, this large of a variance, I think that needs to be looked at a little bit more. And I'm also not comfortable with that large of a variance, um, with the regards to the hundred and fifty feet from the drive-through.
Okay, um, let's talk about motions, then. Do we want to split these out? And kinda do them one by one? Do we do them all together?
Chairfries Daniels, yes. So as, uh, written in the staff report, I separated out the conditional use permit, and then I, I lumped all the variances into one motion, but you could certainly further, um, do them, you could do them individually or in groups.
Okay.
And then I, I did wanna make one final, um, clarification on the signage vari, on the signage variance. So, so they're asking for a variance so that each sign can carry signage of the other business. Um, they're not actually asking for a variance from the sizes. Were these, were these to be combined into one property, um, all of the signage proposed would be permitted. With, you know, with, by not, by not combining them into a single property, um, they're asking for a variance so that they can kind of divvy up the, um, to divvy up the signage on each one. If, if the, if you just simply denied the variance request, um, to have off-premise signage, they could actually still have two signs this large, as shown here, just with all signage for one business on one, all signage for the other business on that. Wouldn't, denying that, denying the variance to off-premise signage alone won't, um, reduce the size of signage, and that's, that's kinda why I introduced it as a, as a discussion point.
Thank you.
Um, and, but I think at a minimum, um, it would be important for the commi, e- even if we don't, don't tackle anything regarding size, I think it would be important for the commission to, to reaffirm the, the Penn Avenue Design Guidelines. Uh, the, typically, we don't talk, we don't talk a whole lot about signage in front of you guys, because it's not part of land use applications. It's something that comes to staff later. Uh, the, the Penn, in the Penn Avenue corridor, there is kind of an interesting, um, quirk or additional sign regulation. In the Penn Avenue corridor, um, which some select pages were included in the report, uh, internally-lit signs are actually prohibited. Um, so you'll notice at places like the, um, the newer CVS, uh, the City Liquor Store at Penn and Sixty-fourth, in pretty close proximity to here, even their large outdoor freestanding signs are not internally, they're not internally-lit box signs. They have an external, either a lighting bar, or they have those kind of gooseneck lamps, shi, casting an external light source. So that is, that is something that's unique to this corridor and isn't, um, you know, that, that these signs wouldn't necessarily meet with it.
So these signs would be internally lit? That's the proposal?
As shown on here, yes. They were, they were noted as internally-lit signs anyways, but, um...
And could you go into a little more detail about why internally-lit are not allowed in Penn Avenue, or what the thoughts were behind that?
Yeah, so that, um, it precedes my time with the city, uh, when the, when the Penn Avenue Design Guidelines went into place, but I think in, generally speaking, um, as you said, you know, as you said, there, it was certainly observed that there are a lot of signs, there are a lot of large freestanding signs on Penn Avenue, very close to the road. Um, and the Penn Avenue, uh, Penn Avenue Corridor master plan that was approved by the city council in two thousand eight or two thousand nine, looks like two thousand eight, it looked heavily at moving more towards, um, I guess, a, a main street or, um, more urban signage types, which typically include less freestanding signs, more, um, awning signs, kind of, um, just kind of lo, lower intensity, I guess, signs in general. So the, the, on the page of the Penn Avenue Design Guidelines, it talks about, um, building panel and letters, um, signs made of metal, glass, wood, plastic, stone, brick, or concrete. Uh, external lighting preferred, backlit letters are okay, so individual channel, they're called channel letters. The individual letters are permitted regardless. It does specifically say no backlit boards. So staff has interpreted that to mean no, um, no internally, internally illuminated, like, large logos, or you get that big plastic, it basically looks like a, you know, big, big plastic rectangle, um, that's internally-lit. A lot of the existing signs on Penn Avenue are non-conforming in that regard. But I think it's, it's going for a more Main Street or sort of classic sign feel, not, um, you know, freeway corridor, large internally-lit signs.
All right, well, let's start with... The, I'm trying to find the page, sorry. Okay. Um, so I will make a motion, then, to recommend approval of a conditional use permit for a restaurant with drive-through at sixty-five twenty-nine Penn Avenue, and site plan approval of sixty-five forty-five Penn Avenue and twenty-two ten sixty-sixth Street West, which is not the individual variances, right? I'm just proposing the conditional use permit, and then we'll maybe break out all the ver, the individual variances, right? Is there a second? Hearing no second. Is there a different proposal someone would like to make?
Yeah, could I just, could I just clarify?
Yeah.
What, so some of the conditions reference things that are addressed by the variances, like the hundred-and-fifty-foot thing is in the conditional use permit? How does that work if we don't agree that the variance is appropriate? Does that mean one should vote against the conditional use permit, uh, if that, if that is their intent?
I believe in the resolution you're looking at, um, if you look under item two, um, in brackets, you'll say draft findings, um, and those would be tailored, um, in what goes to the city council, I believe, based on your feedback. So if you said, uh, you know, uh, if you voted for the CUP and voted for variance A and B, but not variance C, we would remove the findings, um, specific to variance C before it goes, uh, to the city council.
So we could support the CUP for the restaurant without specifically supporting the variances that might make that possible?
Correct.
Okay, and if it's possible to still do so, I would, I would second the chair's motion.
Okay, we'll go forward with that. Uh, discussion. There's been a first and a second. Any discussion? Yeah, okay. All those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. All right, second, then. Can you help me out with what, with the first variance would be? Am I looking at number three?
So in, uh, in order on the report anyways, um, they're listed, uh, on the, on the first page of the report, proximity of drive-through speaker to residential property.
Okay, those are my bullets. Okay, thank you.
Um, I would move that we recommend denial of the variance for proximity to drive-through speaker to residential property.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right, so there is a motion to recommend denial of the drive-through speaker, and a second conversation.
Again, just to reiterate, and I'm glad that the, the property manager was here today. I wish some of the residents could have been here. I think this would really adversely affect the residents there. The only other drive-through variance like this we've approved was three feet to a single household. This is seventy-five feet to a couple dozen households that are within that, within that hundred-and-fifty-foot range. I don't think it's acceptable. I don't think it's unique to this property in any way, and I just don't think it meets our standard.
Um, and I will stand by, I am okay with it. You know, Dairy Queen is not open at six AM, but they are open till ten, and so, um, having lived there, it never bothered me, and that's the approach I'm going for, so.
Well, you know, what I've said before, we're here to represent the residents. Um, I mean, it's nice having businesses and everything, but we're here for the residents, and, uh, the speaker is just too close. And we've got too many people, uh, there are a lot of elderly people that live in those buildings. I know people who live in there. Um, I just don't see, we're just trying to, they're trying to put too much in a small space, and it's just, we're trying to make it work, and it, it just doesn't work, so.
Any other discussion?
Has it been seconded?
Yep, there's motion and a second. All right.
To deny?
Yes, and this would be a yes to denying, right?
Okay, to deny.
A yes would be to denying, a no would be to...
Accept.
Accepting.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Motion carries. Um, all right, second line, then, is the buffer distance adjacent to residential property fifteen feet. Um, so I propose that we approve the buffer distance adjacent to residential property fifteen feet versus eleven teen, eleven-point-five feet proposed along east property line. So this is that it's four feet closer. Is there a second? All right, uh, discussion?
Um, as I stated in my questions to staff earlier, I believe this is something created by the applicant's own choice to include a drive-through, which they are not required to include, so I am not inclined to support this.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anybody wanna make a motion on building coverage?
I, again, I believe that there's, there's nothing unique about this, so I would, uh, make a motion to deny the variance to reduce the building coverage from the twenty-five percent required.
Is there a second? All right, discussion?
So we're moving to deny again.
Yes.
I have to keep my negatives in mind.
So saying yes is that you are agreeing to deny...
Agreeing to deny.
The coverage, which would, if they move forward, force them to make their building bigger.
And we do have a second, correct?
Yes. Any other discussion? Uh, all right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay? I think motion carried? Yes, yes, okay, thank you, guys. It's hard to hear everyone, I know. Um, okay, next variance is rear building setback. Anybody wanna make a proposal?
I mean, I will say I don't feel strongly about this one, just given, in this case, I think the, the intent is to create this Main Street feel by putting it up to the street. They did achieve that. I don't have a problem with this variance, and I guess I would move to approve this variance for the rear bu, building setback. I think...
Okay.
It is unique to the, this use of the site.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second to approve, so yes is we are approving this, no is we are not. Uh, all right, all those in favor say aye. Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Third one, off pre, or sorry, not third, fifth. Um, off-premise outdoor advertising signs. The zoning code prohibits use of signs that advertise business. Okay, so I will propose that we allow them to advertise another business, but not have it be backlit. Set?
That would be consistent with the Penn Avenue Design Guidelines.
Thank you, okay. I, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I was really not for this, but thank you for clarifying, because I would not have realized they could have had multiple signs anyways, just as large. That was my concern, was the large size, so I think the property being together and them kind of functioning as seemingly one unit, I'm okay with them advertising. It's not like they're across the street and twelve blocks down, so. I think it feels like that's what they're intending. Okay, discussion? Any other? No? So there's a motion and a second to approve, uh, signs that aren't interiorly lit. All those in favor say aye?
Um, it was a motion to approve, approve the variance to allow off-premise signage...
With the condition.
With the condition that signs comply with the Penn Avenue Design Guidelines.
Perfect. Uh, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Is that everything?
That's the last one, I don't know.
Did we cover it all?
You did.
Okay.
Do we need to provide any information as to the findings? We'd like to go to council, or do you have sufficient information from the discussion?
Uh, staff's recommendation, so that, as in the planning commission is a recommending body, um, staff's recommendation does change based on, uh, planning commission direction. Um, so our, the, our recommended actions to the city council will, uh, will follow the recommendations made here tonight by the planning commission. Um, the applicant can certainly can, has a decision to make, whether, you know, whether they continue to the, uh, city council as is, with, with the plans that they have, or in dialogue with staff, if anything can be modified further.
And this is currently scheduled to go to the city council on October tenth.
October tenth, and there will be no public hearing, correct, unless the council member decides to take it off?
That's correct, yes. Yep, this would be the only public hearing for this item here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay. All right, next item on the agenda is driveways. Um, so a public hearing to consider changes to the city's zoning ordinance as related to driveway regulations. Staff?
All right, Chairfries Daniels, members of the commission, thank you. Um, as I read through this report, I request that you look in your packet at pages fifty-two and fifty-three. Those, uh, both of those pages in the packet are where I have some visual aids taken from Google Maps, Google Maps Street View, um, of the basic do's, uh, do's and don'ts of drive-throughs, we'll call them, or of driveways. At the direction of the city council, staff has been researching potential modifications to drive-through regulations. Current regulations prohibit properties with single-car garages from having a driveway wider than the garage itself. City staff and council members annually receive a small number of complaints regarding this policy. And so in, in conjunction with relaxing that particular regulation, staff is also proposing to modify a few other driveway regulations, which were, which were last amended in two thousand and five. So under current regulations, driveway width is determined in two ways, based on lot width, so no, no more than thirty-five percent of the front yard area, up to twenty-two feet wide maximum. This results in, uh, potential driveway widths, uh, based on lot size, of seventeen and a half feet for a fifty-foot-wide lot, twenty-one foot, a twenty-one-foot-wide driveway for a sixty-foot lot, and a twenty-two-foot-wide maximum driveway for lots that are seventy-five feet wide or larger. Um, and those are the three most common lot sizes in Richfield, um, so, so we see a lot of driveways come in at, at that width. Um, and then driveway width is also based on the definition of a driveway. Driveways must lead to a garage or other authorized parking area. Parking in the front yard area of properties is only permitted on driveways. And I notice, I, I don't have a definition of front yard area in there, but that would just be everything between, for most properties, that would be everything between... for most properties, that would be everything between the house and the street, is the, basically from the front line of the house out to the street. Corner properties are treated a little bit, uh, a little bit differently, um, where it's based on the way the lot is oriented, even though sometimes the, you'll see corner houses facing the side street. Um, but it, regardless, driveways must lead to a garage or otherwise parking air, other authorized parking area. So for those properties with a narrow, single-car garage, driveway width is potentially limited to as narrow as ten to fourteen feet, regardless of the lot size. This has been found to be an, this has been found to be an overly restrictive policy, making it difficult or impossible to park two cars side by side, or to bypass a parked car at any point on the driveway. Properties that fall into this category do make up a fair percentage of the housing stock in Richfield. Uh, furthermore, current regulations do not specify how and where a driveway should taper from its maximum width up at the garage, uh, down to an existing curb cut that is narrower than the driveway. This lack of speci- specificity has resulted in driveways being widened out to the curb without replacing the curb cut. I'm gonna point to one of the examples. Okay, so on that first page I referenced, page fifty-two, you'll see examples of existing, non-conforming, or illegal driveway expansions. Uh, the one on the right is what, uh, is what we're largely looking to get after with, um, with that, where the reference to the lack of specificity in terms of how a driveway should taper has resulted in some driveways that look like, uh, the one on the top right there, where they've paved the driveway all the way out to the curb, um, through the, through the right-of-way and, and boulevard area, without replacing the curb cut. It, um, I think mo- It's been found to, you know, that, that, that was kind of a gray area in the, in the current ordinance. This, um, this property may well have a two-car garage and are allowed by ordinance to have a wide driveway, but the ordinance simply doesn't specify how that should be treated as you approach the curb, so that was kind of, um, the second piece of this. And then the, the photo on the bottom, um, is actually a great example of what will, so under current, the, the, the large photo at the bottom of page fifty-two, that, uh, as you see, that's an attached one-car garage. Under current ordinance, they actually wouldn't be able to have that pull-off space on the left. They would just have a straight, uh, you know, twelve to fourteen-foot wide, uh, driveway, straight up to the garage. The, under the proposed ordinance, something like that would be allowed. So to rem- to remedy those, uh, related issues, staff proposes to amend the clause regarding lot widths and add a, a new s- a new clause to the ordinance as follows. So widths shall not exceed thirty-five percent of the front yard area, up to a maximum of twenty feet, whichever is less. And I'll get into how that will affect, uh, widths for various properties in a moment. And then, uh, to address the twofold problem, kind of shown on, in these images here, uh, driveway width shall not exceed the width of the curb cut within the boulevard area and the abutting ten feet of property. Beyond that point, uh, width may increase to the number established by the formula in number one. Uh, and then we're adding an additional requirement that the widened portion of the driveway shall have some screening with plantings. Uh, we're not getting any more specific than that or requiring a number, just that when someone does propose to widen a driveway in this way, um, that they think about adding some landscaping to that. Um, so that, again, that change would allow what you see in the bottom image there, and actually, this, the driveway pictured is tapering further back up to the, closer to the garage. That one picture, that, they would actually be able to have a little bit more of the two-car wide segment before it has to, uh, taper down. So how, how these changes affect, uh, residential lots in Richfield? On all lot widths, a driveway with a narrower curb cut could retain that existing width, um, through the boulevard in first ten feet, and then be allowed to expand up to, up to seventeen and a half to twenty feet wide, uh, depending on the width of the lot, regardless of the current garage width. And then also listed in the report, I have how those effects, uh, would, that reduction in maximum size would have no effect on a fifty-foot lot. Um, on a sixty-foot wide lot, it would just reduce the maximum possible width from twenty-one to twenty feet. And on seventy-five feet in larger lots, uh, would reduce the maximum possible driveway from twenty-two feet to twenty. There would be no change to driveways on the street or corner side of corner lots. Um, like I said, a lot of those corner properties have driveways that are in their side yard, not in their front yards. They're actually not affe- those would not be affected by these policies. In addition to relaxing the res- regulation for narrow garages, staff is also proposing to modify the following at the same time. Lots with alley access will not be permitted to install a curb cut in the front yard. This i- this is actually the standard, uh, this is the current policy for all new homes constructed through the Richfield Rediscovered Program, and staff is recommending just to make this policy effective citywide. If unique conditions do exist, uh, necessitating a front driveway when alley access is provided, a property owner, uh, could apply for a variance. Um, another proposed change is that corner lots will only be permitted one curb cut. Currently, corner properties are eligible for a, a curb cut in a driveway to each street. Uh, like I said earlier, most corner properties, overwhelming majority, have garages that are accessed from their side street rather than their front yard. Um, a, a small minority of corner properties were built with front driveways, and under current policy, they're actually allowed to retain those when adding a, a detached garage on the, on the side. Um, many of those existing front driveways on those corner properties are actually, they tend to be pretty close to the intersection, uh, closer than is allowed by ordinance. So this change would require a removal of a front driveway and curb cut if a corner property wanted to add a new one off the side street, i- if they do not already have one. Um, and then lastly, turnaround areas, um, which you see on, on some of our busier streets, particularly Portland Avenue, you see several of them. Um, turnaround areas were actually added to the ordinance back in two thousand and five, when they dramatically reduced driveway widths. Prior to, prior to the two thousand and five ordinance, driveway widths were allowed to cover up to fifty percent of a front yard area, and it was perceived, um, you know, by, by many community members in the city council that we were simply allowing, you know, too much driveway space, and it was, it was most apparent on our busier streets where, where off-street parking is not available. So that, this provision to add turnaround areas was added then. Um, it cur- the current ordinance allows them on arterial streets, which are the very busiest of streets, your, your Portland, Penn, sixty-sixth, Lyndale, et cetera. Um, and it also allowed them on collector streets, which are your sort of secondary busy streets, like Twelfth Avenue, um, Bloomington Avenue, um, seventy-six, seventy-sixth Street East, et cetera. Um, with the exception of Bloomington Avenue and Twelfth Avenue, most of our collector streets actually run east-west, and they don't abut front yard, so it wouldn't, it wouldn't even apply. And, um, in going down, up and down those corridors, we actually could not find any turnaround areas that had been constructed, um, on those collector streets, so we're just proposing to, to modify that, so turnaround, so turnarounds are only permitted on the arterial streets like Portland, Penn, sixty-sixth, where there is actually a pers- you know, where due to traffic levels, it's hard to back out of your driveway, and that's really the intent of the turnaround area, not as an additional parking space, but a place where you could safely back your car into and pull out of your driveway forwards into, into busy traffic. Benefit, going back to, uh, the, the proposed amendments and the benefits of limiting, um, the benefits of limiting driveways and driveway widths in the front yard and boulevard area could include minimizing the impervious surfaces, retaining space for boulevard trees, retaining the avail- retaining on-street parking capacity by way of having uh, fewer and narrower driveways at the curb, leaving, uh, leaving more room for on-street parking, and maintaining existing neighborhood aesthetics. That, that last one generally refers to the, um, removal of fr- front driveways for alley properties. I included an image of that as well, but, um, in, in practice, when you, when you do go down a street where, you know, fourteen out of the fifteen houses have used the alley access, and one person, uh, chose to build a front driveway either because of the original construction of the house, or later added one, it is, it's very noticeable and disruptive to kind of the, the aesthetics of the types of, I guess, the, the neighborhoods that are served by alleys. Um, so staff is recommending approval of the attached ordinance amendments, and will stand for any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
I guess I do.
Yeah.
Um, so is there, you know, speaking to your benefits of limiting the driveways and the driveway widths and the rationale for all this, um, was there much consideration for how this, I guess, meshes with our general stormwater ordinance and how, um, your impervious requirements kind of affect, you know, when you add that much driveway width, um, you know, d- does that trigger stormwater requirements typically, or is it all based on your percent impervious cover?
Not, not on residential properties, and there is still, um, so residential properties, impervious surface, um, there is a, there's a forty fi- forty-five percent of your, um, is that correct? Thirty-five percent. Thirty-five percent of the property, um, can be covered basically in, in buildings and impervious surfaces, and that, that restriction remains, and it remain, so it, it's applied to the property generally as a whole, cannot cover more than thirty-five percent. And also to specifically in the front yard area, cannot cover thirty-five percent, and, um, this, I think this ordinance in a couple of different ways, it allows slightly more driveway width for those particular properties that we're looking to, um, you know, that we were getting complaints about the policy and are looking to help them out a little bit, so there is potentially a little bit more driveway area there, but, uh, we feel that we're compensating for, for that, for those additions on those properties with, um, clarifying policies and other ways that will, um, should not lead to a net increase citywide.
Yes.
Um, so I guess I'm, I'm a little curious, what, first off, just how do we arrive at the idea that it is worse to have a wide driveway where only part of it goes to the garage versus a garage door at the end, making it more appealing? Is, what, what's the rationale between why a two-car garage should get a wider driveway than a one-car garage, which is reduced but still exists to some extent?
You know, I'm not, I'm not sure what the particular, um, impetus behind that was, that back in two thousand and five, the ordinances were, um, were essentially entirely rewritten. It, it didn't use to specify in the definition of driveway that driveways had to lead to a garage. Um, so it was staff's interpretation of the existing policy that so tightly restricted it to only be a straight shot to the garage. Um, but you're absolutely right, the existing policy has been, um, found to be, I think, both by members of the community that have raised concerns about it, and, and by staff have found the existing policy to be somewhat unfair to those with smaller garages, in that it gets away from, um, you know, driveway width based on your lot size, and it based it, you know, more specifically on your garage, so you could have two properties, exact same size, right next to each other, one happened to be built with a two-car garage, well, they're allowed the full width, whatever it is based on the lot size. Property next door happened to be the style of house built with an attached one-car garage, well, they're limited to twelve or fourteen feet, or whatever it is, even though the properties are the same size, it was sort of restricting driveway widths based on the type of house construction that especially impacted those with, with attached one-car garages.
And so I guess my, my only concern with this here is I, I like the sort of compromise you came up with, where you've got your narrow curb cut, you widen out as you get back to the garage. It doesn't really affect my biggest concern, which is that the amount of width in the, in the boulevard and, uh, adjacent to the street, but my understanding is that if somebody wanted to pay to do a curb cut, or the street was being reconstructed anyway, and asked for a wider curb cut, even with a one-car garage, they could do a twenty-foot driveway straight back, is that right?
That is, well, for, for a seventy-five foot or wha- yeah, for a, for a large, for a larger lot, absolutely. Yes, so for basically anyone with larger than a fifty-foot lot, that is correct. If someone wishes to replace the curb cut, um, or if the street is being completely reconstructed and they're being replaced anyways, they could widen that and then have a, a, a driveway at that full width all the way back. Um, staff did not have a good way of sort of atta- attacking that through this ordinance amendment. We can certainly consider, um, taking another look at that. I guess the, you know, the wider driveways up to that percent, up to that percenti- based on the percentage, or up to twenty-two feet, or twenty feet as proposed, have been in ordinance for a long time, and, um, you know, we've always allowed curb cuts to be replaced either during new construction or otherwise. Most people, uh, according to the city engineer, uh, when most people redo their driveways, they opt not to replace the curb cut. They, the vast majority do leave that narrow curb cut in place, just primarily due to expense, um, or sometimes to save a mature tree or other reasons. Um, but yes, certainly, under this ordinance, anyone that chooses to pay for, to replace their curb cut, they can have a fully wide driveway all the way down and are not required to taper it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Um, I just have a quick question about the, the driveway issue, so, um, because I've grown up in Richfield for such a long time, and I've heard about driveway dramas that have happened. I do feel like, I just wanted to say that this, I think, would address that, um, with so many people complaining about, you know, how come this person can park a car next to their garage, or, I don't know, I like this ordinance. I feel like it'll solve a lot of problems.
Any other questions for staff? This is a public hearing. If anybody would like to come up, we'll open the public hearing. Any questions? Okay. Um, motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Um, is there a motion? What?
That was just the public hearing, correct?
Yes.
And who is the second? Okay.
We kind of whipped through that a little faster.
We have to be extra sure tonight because of the, the possible technical difficulties. I'm sure we're getting the audio, but, uh, definitely good to get them on paper as they happen. Thank you.
Um, where are we? Is there a motion? I'll move the staff recommendation. Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion? Yeah.
So my, in general, like ninety-nine percent of this I really like. I'm just gonna, kind of an aside, I, as somebody who lived on a block with alleys with one front driveway, that there have been two accidents with cars parked in front of our house and people peeling out of that driveway, just on a personal level, it really, I'm really supportive of that, that provision being modified. Um, I am curious on both the alley access and the turnaround, if somebody has an existing front driveway on a lot with an alley, they come to widen their driveway, can they do so because they have a pre-existing driveway, or can they only maintain the exact width that they have now?
The latter. They would not be able to wa- uh, they would not be able to widen an existing, um, their driveway, their driveway as is would be considered non-conforming and would not be able to widen an existing driveway.
If they wanted to repave it, do they need to pull a permit for that? Would they be able to repave it?
Yes, repaving can always be done, and I think, uh, and yes, a, a permit is required for all driveway replacement, repaving, I'm gonna repeat that. Dr- a permit is required for all driveway work, um, you know, and I think particularly the image I shared where they're, um, paved all the way out to the street without replacing the curb cut, I think some of that happened, um, because wider driveways were built prior to the two thousand and five ordinance. So they had a, where you see a nice, fresh concrete driveway that's paved either non-conforming or illegally all the way out to the street, that was done either because they already had maybe an asphalt driveway of that width prior to, um, so it's kind of just considered non-conforming in that way. Um, other times, people don't pull permits and build them, build them like that, and it's, it's hard to, it, it is hard to go back and look at, you know, who did, who did this completely illegally just paved it this way? Who was merely replacing something that maybe was done two property owners ago in asphalt, and now they're putting in the investment to make it concrete? So people can always repave what's already there, even if it is-
With a permit.
Even if it is non-conforming, if someone wanted to go from asphalt to concrete, but it was too wide, um, we wouldn't stop them from doing so.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess my only discomfort here is the situation where, where we're now creating, there are, I don't know, probably a third, I would guess, maybe they know the number of one-car garages in the city? What percentage of the garages are, are one-car? Do you have an idea?
You know, we don't, um, have, we don't have stats on what percentage of the prop- what percentage of the properties sort of fall into the current loophole.
But we've got basically a current, a current chunk of properties that are limited in their, you know?
Sorry, to where I live, where we have tuck-under garages, and, you know, we have, it's, it's almost impossible to squeeze a, even like a, my vehicle, my Subaru Outback, without, you know, I have one inch of clearance on both sides to park in that garage, you know? Um, so it's, it's having that necessary second car for both mine and my wife. It, it, it makes sense, and, you know, I mean, fortunately, we had a double wide curb cut when we bought the home. Um, but, you know, it's, it's situations where there are mu- like, I would say, you know, half the homes in my neighborhood around Sheridan Hills have tuck-under garages or single-car garages. I mean, that's not the uniform standard across the city, but.
No, so I, I totally understand the need for like, people do need more space. They prefer to have it off the street. Um, my concern is that we've got a large number of one-car garages. By making this change, we're sort of opening the door for that many more wide driveways, particularly out to the curb is what concerns me. So, I mean, I get that impervious surface is impervious surface, but when it's against the curb as the, as staff's findings were for going with the twenty-two to twenty feet, when it goes all the way to the curb, that's that much less space. We can have boulevard trees, that's that much less green space right against the curb. That's that much less off-street, on-street parking area that we have because that curb is gone. So my only issue or the thing that I'd like to see changed is to preserve the width of garage rule at the point of the curb, but could still continue to allow people to flare out, which is probably the way we anticipated already happening because most people aren't gonna replace the curb cut. But right now, we're sort of betting on the idea that this is gonna work out because nobody's gonna bother to replace the curb cut. But that's not gonna be true in ten or twenty years when we get reconstructions, when it's just a question of checking a box if you want it wider or not. So I just wanna see us keep the narrower thing at the street where we're already doing that, but still allow people to get that extra parking space where they really need it closer to their house.
I would make an amendment to my motion if who seconded it would also.
Yeah, go for it.
There would be a lot of situations where you would run into that because a lot of these garages are within, I'd say, twenty-five to twenty feet, you know, not much longer than a regular parking stall, um, that you'd find in a parking lot. So I, I guess, you know, I totally get your rationale for this. But I, I guess, I guess, you know, I, I think, I don't see, I guess, I'm not super concerned about a lot of people expanding their curb cuts and, and, I don't know.
The issue with, with, that I worry about this is it's so much, it's very easy to go wide. We can say tomorrow, you can build a hundred percent of your front yard. It's, it's almost impossible to go narrower because as staff have noted, if it's existing, if it's already paid, they can keep that even if we change the rules to be narrower for future ones. And because the garages do have to be set back, I believe, at least thirty feet from the property line, they have ten additional feet of boulevard, like, we're talking forty feet back from the curb. You'd, you'd have to have pretty enormous vehicles. I don't, you know, I don't, I'm not familiar with your exact, your exact situation. So it, it may be true in your case, but I think in most cases, they should have space to maneuver in front of a car parked in the driveway.
And I would say in that case too, someone can ask for variance to that, right? That they want instead of just for all single lanes.
Yeah, if there was a unique situation, elevation, preserving a particularly, um, you know, healthy mature tree or something like that, certainly variances would be, um, entertained. I, I don't expect that we'll have a, I would expect that we would have fewer requests for variances. And honestly, we, we haven't brought, I don't think in my time here, we haven't brought driveway variances before the commission because generally at the staff level, when we do have someone come in, um, who's in the situation that, that the current ordinance doesn't accommodate, we tell them, you know, at the staff level, we tell them that this is the ordinance and, and likely don't meet the criteria for a variance. So I wouldn't expect more variance requests here. The one thing I want to clear up, um, to which Commissioner Heyford O'Leary was, um, talking about the requiring tapering for all properties, or I guess I'm not sure how you would accomplish that in the, in the ordinance by, because you can't stop people from replacing their curb cuts. You can't tell them that they can't replace it. And, um, driveway widths are allowed up to the, up, driveway widths up to these numbers set in ordinance, um, are allowed. So you, I guess you're in, you're either proposing to reduce all driveway widths in the, in the boulevard, basically mandating that, that all drive, that all new driveways or all future driveways be narrow through the boulevard area. And the concern with that, I think, is that it, that it makes so many non-conforming. So, you know, the, um, even, even with the proposed change, we are making, even within the proposed change, we are making current driveways that are twenty-two feet wide. Um, technically may, are making those non-conforming by reducing the maximum down to twenty.
So just to be clear, and the ma- the mechanism I was thinking of was particularly section two subdivision six E two, where it says driveway width within the boulevard area and a budding ten feet of the property shall not exceed the width of the curb cut. So as you do currently for the width of the total driveway, I would suggest that that area within the boulevard area and a budding ten feet of the property shall not exceed the width of the curb cut or the width of the garage face, whatever language it is used to describe the maximum width of the driveway today.
So if you had a double-car garage, you could have the double.
You could have the double.
But if you have a single car garage, you have a single.
Yeah, and I, you know, if we were starting from scratch, I think it would make sense to maybe require that for everybody. But I think since we've already, we're already restricting it for single-car garages, even if we were to go with the change I'm describing, it would still be significantly more room for single-car garages and more parking space. But we're still preserving where we can, that boulevard space, that green space, that space for trees and that on-street parking.
Right, when I think about like my specific house and what that looks like, right? I would prefer to be restricted to a single versus a double because I think it looks better on that street with the space allowed for it instead of this big wide expansive that isn't needed.
Yeah, I would say part of the reason we looked into this is, you know, tastes change and, um, values change. And I think people are embracing the space they have more than was the case in the past. And like, if you look at some of these pictures and you say, okay, homeowner, uh, your choice is to either maintain a narrow driveway because your garage is narrow and a narrow curb cut because your garage is narrow, or to build a larger garage so that you can have a wider driveway and a larger, a wider curb cut. Um, that kind of defies that, um, that feeling of wanting to keep the houses, um, smaller and, uh, you know, not forcing people to make, um, larger garages.
Don't we require all new construction or teardowns to have a two-car garage?
The, yes, it, new.
So aren't we already kind of saying?
New construction is required to have a two-car garage or, um, if they do choose to build a one-car garage, basically citing it, citing it such that it could be expanded or replaced with a two-car garage in the future.
We did change that a number of years ago. It wa- it did require two-car garage, but it was changed to say a two-car garage or at least space for two-car garage.
How many people are realistically tearing down their garage because they need it not just for the width of the driver next to it, but for that extra ten feet? Are people really gonna spend thirty thousand dollars for a new garage just to get that extra ten feet that we might disallow here?
I, I don't expect that anyone will rebuild their garage for the purposes of expanding their driveway. But that's kind of what the current ordinance is asking of folks. That if you have a, if you have a one-car garage, you cannot widen your driveway unless you replace the garage first. And I think that's what was perceived to be kind of the, kind of the unfairness in the, in the current ordinance was that, that, you know, there, there are properties where people would, perhaps those with detached garages. You had people who were, for whatever reason might be, were choosing not to build a two-car garage, but could. Then you also have the properties with attached one-car garages that are built, where the house is built all the way across the lot where they simply do not have the capability, um, to, to have a second space or to have a two-car wide driveway. So I think that as proposed, I think the ordinance slants more towards being fair to all properties where, kind of regardless of the garage width, and gets back to tying it to the lot, gets back to tying it more closely to the lot width. But with the compromise being that we're dropping the maximum width by two feet.
Um, no.
I would like to say too, and with regards to the fairness, I think that allowing one-car garages to expand a little bit also addresses the idea that there's more multi-generational families living in Richfield who might have more than two cars that should need to be in their driveway.
Just, I guess to the fairness question, because I'm, I'm sympathetic to that, but I feel a little bit hemmed in where, like, I mean, staff's position is that we can't go any narrower than twenty feet. And the only way to make it fair then is to make everything, or to allow everything to be wider. So the only option to increase fairness is to reduce, you know, boulevard plantings, boulevard width, or give up homeowners the opportunity to do so. So I would be all about fairness if it truly meant that we could get everything to a reasonable standard where everything was narrowed down to say a maximum of fourteen or sixteen feet. I would be supportive of that. I'm not sure how my fellow planning commissioners or commissioners would feel, and it sounds like maybe staff isn't supportive of that because there are so many wider driveways. I guess, what, what do people think of a consistent standard where we require this taper for everybody equally, but still allow that maximum width closer to the house?
I'm fine with that, actually. I, I agree, I think having the more green space and that little bit that you're coming in is fine. You're not stacking four deep.
And I would say, because my concern is, is first and foremost, the boulevard space. I don't feel that it has to be ten feet back. If it tapered to the point of the boulevard up to the property line, that would be fine with me too. I'm really concerned about preserving the boulevard space and preserving that curb for on-street parking.
Wouldn't, if we did that though, wouldn't it kind of bring us back to why they're changing the ordinance in the first place to simplify it or?
Well, it would still be, I think it would still be simpler because it would be the same standard for everybody. It would still allow people to get this extra parking space that they want, but it would preserve the boulevard space even better than a current one does because it would apply a limit to two-car garages as well.
Anybody else have any thoughts? I will stick with my proposed amendment with the change noted. Who seconded?
The original motion?
Yeah.
Commissioner Pin seconded the original motion.
Prior to the amendment.
Prior to the amendment.
Prior to the amendment. Would you take the amendment on your second? So procedurally, I'm gonna need some help here. Are we getting the book out? Oh. It's a friendly amendment, right? That I know. But if it's not seconded, don't, don't feel like you have to by any means.
I, I guess, I was gonna clarify.
Okay.
What, what is, sorry, can you clarify? I'm, I'm not, I'm not clear. What, what is your concern with going narrower just in the boulevard area?
I, I guess for the most part, I'm just not concerned that we're gonna lose that many homes to four feet of driveway space, extra driveway space, when it's all said and done. And I think being that the lot widths are gonna regulate the width of that curb cut to some degree too, I'm not entirely concerned that's gonna happen. And then also, if you have a tight lot that's gonna have a double-wide curb cut being proposed because they wanna expand that, uh, it's, it's, at that point, you're more than likely gonna trigger your stormwater requirements. And they're gonna say, darn, I better just do a swoop out because I'm gonna need space for my rain garden, or I'm gonna make this all permi- pervious, paver.
I thought, I thought there were, the stormwater requirements didn't apply to single-family residential.
Well, if you hit a certain impervious threshold, they will, correct?
That's correct. There are not specific stormwater requirements, you know, for single-family residential properties other than that thirty-five percent impervious. And given that driveway width is already limited to a maximum of thirty-five percent in the front yard area and on the property as a whole, um, nothing in this, nothing in this ordinance would allow them to exceed that. Because they, they can't reach, no one is allowed to exceed thirty-five percent.
Like, yeah, and so I, I think, given that, I, I, I feel like over a decade, we're gonna get five or ten driveways at the most that might feel like we're stealing space to some degree out of the boulevard. But for the most part, I'd, and I, I just, I don't realistically see it happening.
You go down, you go down these streets and you see, you know, pretty much any new, newer home, there's a, a nice Richfield, you know, nice-looking house overall, which we rediscovered home on like Tenth Avenue, I think. And it's got a maximum width driveway, I think possibly flaring out even wider, two or three-car garage. And a huge amount of the front yard is taken up by this driveway. You get these awkward situations where you get two driveways close together and there's not enough space for a tree. So in addition to the four feet you lose, you, you start to edge out available planting space for those trees. You also start to do the same thing with those on-street parking spaces since you're required by state law to be five feet from the driveway cut for where you park your car. Like, you know, it, it adds up and it has this cumulative effect. And I, I've seen it, you know, my own neighborhood in the areas that don't have alleys where these larger driveways start to kind of take over. And although it's not gonna be, I don't think, you know, everybody's gonna start making huge driveways tomorrow. We can't undo the driveways that are built, but we, we can prevent excessively wide ones from being built.
Any procedure idea yet? How we move forward? Can I not amend?
So I think.
We'd have to vote as the original?
What I would, without, this is not as helpful as I'd hoped. So toss that aside.
I love my book and I'm.
You know, I've heard in general, that's a bad way to start that sentence. I, I think that, um, I think it's generally understood that friendly amendments are sort of off-book. That's not how Sturgis or, um, you know, Roberts Rules of Order would. And I think what we, the commission uses Sturgis, um, according to the bylaws. Um, I, I think friendly amendments are generally frowned upon because of situations just like this one. So that amendments, amendments to motions should be vo- the amendment to the motion should be voted on. And then you return, whether that passes or fails, then you return to the original motion. So that's probably a good practice.
Okay, let's do that. So Sean has proposed an amendment. I will second it.
So just to be clear, I, I don't actually know what I'm proposing, but the maximum width is, because we didn't really.
The same size of the dri- as the.
Is it the front face of the garage or the one, the one car or everybody's the same?
The front face to the garage is what I thought.
That's what we thought, okay, I will, I will stick with that.
That what you want?
Well, no, because we also discussed if we wanna be fair, then it should.
So what's your motion?
So my, my motion is a maximum of, of fourteen feet, um, regardless of the width within the boulevard area, and it may flare out to the maximum width allowed by lot size beyond the boulevard area.
Is there a second? I would second size of the dri- of the garage for aesthetic purposes, but not.
Okay. Let's let that motion go. I would like to move the width of the garage as the maximum width within the boulevard area, but otherwise would accept the changes. So one car would be limited in width.
I will second that amendment.
Okay.
Um, discussion? We've had a lot. All right. So you're voting on just the amendment? All those in favor say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
All right. Amendment does not carry. So back to the original motion as staff has recommended. And there's a second. Uh, any more discussion?
I'm not happy about the width thing. I think this is a net positive though, and I will be voting for it despite my concerns.
Um, all right. All those in favor say, wait, you had a question?
Oh, the, the motions, the main motion was again, so back to the main motion.
To approve staff's recommendation.
Sure, okay, what, yes.
Does that work?
I have that.
Um, all those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for the fantastic discussion. I appreciate that. Um, what else have we got here tonight? We did do a public hearing for that, yeah, okay. Um, other business. So consideration of a resolution finding the acquisition and disposition by the HRA of sixty-eight thirty-nine Cedar Avenue for future redevelopment as mixed-use and sixty-four oh-nine Sixteenth Avenue for future redevelopment as high-density residential is consistent with the Richfield Comprehensive Plan. Staff.
Thank you. In July of twenty seventeen, the blighted single-family property at sixty-eight thirty-nine Cedar Avenue was acquired by the HRA. This property is located in the Cedar Avenue corridor and is designated for future mixed-use development. The HRA has a purchase agreement for the property at sixty-four oh-nine Sixteenth Avenue, which is located in the Cedar Point Housing Redevelopment area and is designated for high-density residential use. Uh, the, the HRA plans to retain ownership of both properties until a future date when redevelopment occurs. Uh, the city's purchases require a finding of consistency with the Comprehensive Plan by the Planning Commission. The purchase of these properties is consistent with the two thousand and eight Comprehensive Plan. And, uh, that's all I have for you. We'll stand for any questions.
Anybody have any questions? This is across from Target, right?
The, uh, one of the.
That side of sixty-six?
One of the properties is on the, the backside of that. So that housing development, the two blocks facing Target. All of the properties facing Richfield Parkway were torn down a few years ago with the installation of the Parkway. Out of, there's approximately fifteen or so properties on the ba- on the Sixteenth Avenue side. Uh, the city, or the HRA rather, currently owns three of them. So this would, this would be the fourth, um, out of that bunch. And then, um, as a, as a development on that site moves forward, the, presumably the developer would still be responsible for acquiring the remaining, um, you know, eleven or twelve properties that are left on that block to complete that development.
Ask why the HRA is buying them now instead of waiting?
Uh, because the HRA has funding available and willing sellers.
Okay.
The other property is on the, there's a narrow strip between Cedar Avenue and Trunk Highway seventy-seven.
Yep.
Or a block or so that has a few single-family homes on it and a couple of apartment buildings. Uh, this particular house had a significant fire and is deemed to be uninhabitable. Uh, and so the HRA was able to solve a couple of different problems by purchasing the property.
Fantastic, thank you. Fantastic, thank you. Um, I will make a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Is there a second? Any conversation? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Um, liaison reports. Community services, I have no report, but I, I will add, um, we did our bus tour last week, which was fantastic, so thank you, Matt, for all your help with that. We toured kind of three locations and took the bus throughout. So we started, um, at the roundabout out on Target and kind of walked through that area and then we stopped by the hub and got to kind of take a look around there. And then we also stopped by this Dunkin' Donuts site and stopped there, so. Uh, I think there were four city council members there with, um, Commissioner O'Leary with I. Um, and hopefully we'll do those more in the future, so. That's all I had. City Council? Uh, HRA?
I do not have a report.
All right, uh, school board's not here, but there is, I will say, uh, September thirtieth here, Saturday morning at nine AM. Um, will be a school board debate? Yeah, conversation? Yeah, candidates forum, thank you. So questions will be asked of the candidates. I'll be there. Yes, that's excellent, so. Okay, perfect. Um, Transportation Commission?
And I was at the meeting, but I'm lagging on most of the agenda except sixty-ninth street was an issue that came up again, though they had gone forward with keeping the, pretty much the current arrangement that they have for that. Um, there was some direction or confusion from individual council members of wanting to remove it and replace it with shoulders. Chair Breeze Daniels and I were among a group of residents that met with one of the council members on, onsite out there. Um, and so far it seems that they, their now, current direction is to retain it as it is. Narrowing it to improve it a little bit for the homes on the south side.
Do you have any update on the test that was in front of Augsburg Library? The cross?
That was also discussed.
Is the test done?
The test is done. Um, and I guess against city staff recommendations, the county directed that the crosswalks had to be removed at that location. Um, in addition to the, the posts, which were always going to be removed. So, if you don't care for that policy of the county to remove more crosswalks, um, you can certainly write your county commissioner as I intend to do so.
Thank you. Uh, Chamber of Commerce? No, anything else? All right. Center, city planner reports?
Well, um, you stole my thunder on the tour. It's okay. Um, I don't have anything else for you that I want to, yeah, extend my thanks to Chair Breeze Daniels as well for coming up with the concept, kind of doing the, by her putting together a ru, the idea and a rough schedule of how, uh, the, how a bus tour would work, it made it very easy for me to kind of, to execute, uh, you know, and, uh, just finalize the details and schedule and get the invitations out and, I think a good time was had by all. Several council members remarked that they, uh, that they really enjoyed it. So, thanks again for coming the, coming up with the idea and putting us on a tight timeline to get it done. Our next regular meeting is on October twenty-third. I am certain there's, uh, probably at least one work session in the intervening, uh, time between now and then, but I don't have that date in front of me.
The work session that was canceled today, will that be rescheduled or is it a different work session than we anticipate having?
So the, um, we're not sure. They're working through some issues. The developer is.
But, so the applicant just chose to cancel the work session?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, is there a motion to adjourn? Second? All those in favor say aye? Aye? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Thank you both.